Ready? That's right. Father Ginn, we thank you for another day of life. While we thank you for the many blessings you blessed us with. While we thank you for loving us, watching over and caring for us. While we just pray for the ones that are sick. While we pray for the ones that are hurting. Pray for Todd's family and Todd and his loss and the family of young men. Just pray you should be with those and comfort those. Lord, pray you can be with this body here tonight, Lord. Help us do your will. While we ask forgiveness of our sins and all we've done. So may he receive Christ's name on prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the October 17th, 2019 Wentonville City Council meeting. Jimmy's still out due to health issues that he's having. Todd's out. The loss of one of their family members passed away. I'd like to ask everybody to remember that family. In prayer, remember Jimmy. He's been, he's having a tough time with his health issues. Remember him in prayer. Lord, sometimes get over certain elements. In prayer, this could be right there. All right, first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the October 1st, 2019, Wentonville City Council meeting. If anybody's got any comments or any questions on how the minutes are written, need to ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion.
Ask for a second. Anyways, all in favor? The next item on the agenda is a library hire. Regina's been down a employee or two. I'm not sure how many you're down. There's one. Seem like we go through. Some departments would go through quite often. You've got a recommendation for us tonight?
Yes, the board did interviews last week and met on last Friday. And we had about 12 applicants. Maybe only three actually qualified, but we're excited and we'd like to rehire Tara Pect. Tara worked for the library a couple of years ago. She left on good terms due to her internship and scheduling with her school. She just finished her, finishing up her master's degree. So she's taking a little break until she goes back into her PhD. And so she is guaranteeing, as long as nothing drastic happens, she will be available for at least three more years. And she was one of the best employees I've worked with. We were sad to lose her when we had to a couple of years ago. So, but on behalf of the library board, I thought somebody was gonna show it if they must have to. We would like to request to retire her.
Has anybody got any questions to Regina about this hire?
This is just to, yeah, to replace a part-time that moved to North Dakota.
If not, go on. Her recommendation that we put Tara back to work. As long as she can fill that position. Build up this only option that you're, that you're willing to see back in there for a while.
Yeah, yeah. We, there was, like I said, a couple others that were qualified, but this way, there's no waste in training. We don't have to train and she's definitely qualified. And she's done a lot volunteering. Like she helped me this summer when she was on the school break, when I had staff out for vacations and with the summer reading program. So the board just felt like, you know, she was the best pick for it.
Need to ask for a motion. All in favor?
Thank you, guys.
Oh, real quick, but is she, since this, do we have a, since this employee's been in that position, been in the library before? And we need to have an understanding of how the pay's gonna start for this employee.
I told her already that she'd have to start back at the bottom. You know, as a new hire.
She be in, she gonna be in the step race. I need to, I need to make sure that we understand that before we leave here tonight. Because I'd like, which we've got, everybody's got a pay scale. I think Mike's put in the folder. We need to look at that, like, we're like, while we're on that subject, if we can.
It should be in the back.
Oh. We always leave stuff out of mind. I think do it intentionally. You need the back, as on the back of the folder. I've got one, but I figured you had one in here.
What is that? Eight thirty-five? And the top out would be ten twenty-five now that we raised it by twenty-five cents.
Yours is laying on the table.
And is this, is she going in as a part-time library aide?
Yes. So is the eight thirty-five start out with twenty-five cents till she gets to the ten twenty-five?
Was she an aide before?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know where she's at before?
She might remember, but I do not remember. I know she, you know, had worked a couple of years, so she had gotten a few.
I'm gonna let him look.
Okay.
Being inexperienced. You know, that's why I was gonna recommend the council.
Oh, is that pretty awesome? Because she could really, she does deserve it. She's an awesome, awesome employee. Oh, that's.
Can I ask the council just to go ahead and, let's let her pick up where she left off? Does council got a problem with that? We might look. Okay, but I don't think we have to vote on that. But, it's just, I want to get clarified when she gets back to the place.
Thank you. She will be so appreciative, and so am I. That's a great thing.
Well, it's just, you know, it's hard to get, you know, good people in the position you want them in. She's already been there and she's come back.
She's got her master's in.
Uh, yeah, her master's is in literature and English. And then now she's taking a little break and she's gonna go into the PhD program. But she's just kinda wanting a little break. But that's a five-year program and she might have to do internship for like, into the library.
I'm gonna go ahead and Mike, can you tell us what that is? A couple of times. Go ahead to the next item on the agenda is sales tax holiday. It's severe weather preparedness. We've been doing that every year. Local businesses really likes to see us. Kinda helps their sales, I guess you could say. They sell stuff to help people prepare for the bad weather. Of course, it's up to council. I'd like to see the council on the last for a motion. The council would approve that sales tax holiday for severe weather. It's on February the 21st to the 23rd. Is when that, that'll run. And it's only, it's only taxed exempt on weather-related. Generators, you know, stuff of that nature.
Weather regio.
Yeah, it's not on clothes and food. Just on stuff that'd be used, you know.
I make that motion.
Second. All in favor? And I always remember too, I don't know that unless there's a change you can correct on this from Todd, I'm sure it would be here. But when we vote, it's actually only for our board. Is that not correct? We had to also agree to do that for so really.
They have agreed already.
It's true. So they're full of four senses. When we vote, it's on, on our tax, quite like that. Always voting on lots of two, eight-five or whatever. We're not voting on two or four.
They typically vote and send me a copy of their minutes and they get followed with that.
All right, the next item on the agenda is city hall notaries. Anybody that found need to? Does everybody got a copy of this? See, what they're asking for is counsel for recommendation of notaries for the city. Only conduct city business unless any will purchase half the seal for the personal use. Secretary of State's office have been advised that this is a good practice for the city. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I don't know if that's, is that something that you want us to act on? That they're going to counsel to?
You do. We've set a bit of a precedence because we tried not to notarize civil matters or anything that might involve some kind of litigation later. So with the new marriage certificate, we really need some action taken on it.
We've done same with the other ones, right?
For the marriage, yeah.
Because you know, when people's in a, people in a rural area though, they, I mean, and if you're not in a county seat, people always, I know, you know, back in the day, people say, we go to courthouse and get this done. You know, but what you're saying is that they need, some, some certain situations need to just be recommended to somewhere like a legal office, like a lawyer's office or something like that, instead of offering that service here at city hall.
The library board can act on your behalf, but for our, we use here, we really don't need to.
They're not exempt from the city. Would, I think what, this will apply to them and the park. It's not like school or hospital or water department to libraries, not really per se. Is it? Because we, I mean, we pay, I mean, we make the payroll. So I think whatever, if we make the decision, if the council makes decisions, it'll be that this, that's how it needs to be at all the departments within the city. You know, even for the notary district, if it's gonna apply to them or the park or if it's public. Do you get very many people that want stuff notarized?
I bet we do, at least. I would say, it, you know, it does vary, but we're probably doing about four or five documents a week.
And you don't charge for them?
Mm-mm.
And we also do the same. We're still gonna notarize things for people. We're just not gonna notarize marriage certificates.
So you want to?
Blains. Different.
But the way you're, you're wanting to set this at your discretion as to what you notarize or don't notarize or what we allow to notarize?
Typically, like, I have the ones listed here that are notary. Depending on what department you're in, naturally the police department, how different DUI things, different. You know, she does a lot of police, you know, documents. We do a lot of administration documents. Debbie does a lot of traffic, people coming in and out. I'm assuming Gina, she's not here tonight, but I'm guessing she does maybe when people are signing up for a ball. I don't know what they notarize down there. Certain, they're probably not doing marriage certificates. The library, I'm sorry to say, is probably a stop for marriage certificates and different other, you know, you probably do.
You don't wanna see those anymore?
That'd be up to, I still think that'd be up to your.
Oh, okay. We don't, I don't, you know. There's two of us, so like, it's me and Sue. And the board paid for our bond and our, all our stuff.
That's, the city paid for all of ours.
Yeah.
So I would think that would be their question. I actually had somebody that wanted their marriage certificate notarized a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, we've probably done about ten, or I would say probably six, since the law went into effect.
You notarized the marriage certificate, however, it still has to be filed in the probate office?
Right.
And it's to my understanding, and I haven't read all of this, that you have to make sure that person's over sixteen?
Yep.
And, you know, you are bound a bit by your.
Well, now, we understand, but they have to have a.
We also keep logs and keep copying.
I didn't accept the ID the other day because it didn't look like him and it was like an old ID and somehow it hadn't expired yet and it was out of state. The picture did not look like him. And I just don't even, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
We have so much going on already in our office that I don't think we need to add the marriage certificate out.
It's been encouraged for libraries to offer that as a precursor.
The library, I can see, sorry. But not, not here.
Right.
I don't actually have the libraries listed because if they pay for theirs out of the library fund, that's a whole different budget and a whole different account. That's not part of it.
Problem I've got with this.
We actually paid for the parts out of our money.
Well, I don't know if that bothered me, was this that word up there? Unless. It's just like using the word but. I don't believe there's such a thing. A lot of times, it's either is or it's non. If I'm okay with the part that says, city only conducts city business. I don't care who pays for the seal. It's either you're gonna, either, either we're gonna allow it doing it or not. I'm blocking, I'm blocking unless when you got an individual that works for the city has purchased half the seal to be able to do it because they've purchased half the seal. If it pertains to the business, to the city, it needs to be city business only regardless. That make sense? I mean, I don't mind somebody, you kinda, you kinda,
Here's the.
You're kinda, kinda making it say that everybody's got a, everybody's got a notary, needs to either pay half of it or not be doing a notary, notarizing anything here. And I'm okay with not doing any civil matters at all. I kinda think we need just clean that up a little bit, clear that up, clear that, clear that up just a little bit. Is how we, how they vote on that. You know, because I, I don't, I don't want to say that somebody can't get something notarized at city hall.
Well, here's the question I guess we have. Because we have one person that was already a notary and they came here for employment. So they, they do, you know, personal notary work outside of the office. So because of other rules, they really, if they're doing it for any kind of personal gain, they really need to be purchasing that seal. However, if we're gonna let them notarize for us in here or we're gonna let make it part of their duty, then I feel like they should maybe just split the cost. I'm not sure the correct way to handle that. But if we pay for it, they can't use it personally.
The people, the person you're talking about has their own seal, has their own notary. And they purchased it, paid for it themselves or whatever, paid for half of it or whatever. Are they charging for that note to notarize here?
Not here, we don't charge at all here.
Here's what I'd like to say. I don't care who, I don't care how many's got a notary. If they pay for a notary and they have their own notary and they charge, that's, that's, I think that's perfectly okay. But I think you need to have one designated person inside city hall that's gonna notarize as a, as a service, as to build a notary, as a service. And I don't mind you recommending to the other person outside the city business. You understand what I'm saying? I don't think that we need to, I don't want to say the city charging to have a notary, to be able to notarize something or something like that.
No, we're not, we're not asking to charge. We're not going to charge. We haven't ever.
So you're saying that this is not going to interfere with the personal notary that they do on the side outside of city business? You're telling me, I want to make sure that we're, that we're clear on.
They may or may not even charge outside, I don't know. But they have that option if they purchase it themselves. If, if the city purchased it for them, they don't have that option to use it outside.
City, I've got a notary that works for me, which I, I think that I pay for the notary. I pay for the, for them to be able to do it, to notarize papers, you know. I guess I'm kinda, I guess I'm kinda having a little bit of trouble understanding and making sure that I'm on the same page. Because we're talking about two different things here. We're talking about whether that somebody has paid part of, paid part of the cost of seal and then we're talking about a civil matter. Not notarizing civil issues at all. We don't do that.
We haven't been, no.
Yeah, but you're not, you're not, you're notarized ever in anything.
As long as they have the right, you know, ID.
The city pay for your notary.
The board, the Wentonville Library Board pays it out of the funding we raise. And then we're not allowed to take it out of the building. It is for library business anyway. So like if Sue or Iowa says, we can't take that particular.
We haven't had anyone pay part of their notary at all yet at this point. We just got a lot, one person that has their own seal, but it's time for their renewal. So if we pay for it, that sets a whole nother standard for them. They can't use it outside this office. But if they pay for it themselves, I mean, do you want them to use it here too? I mean, I don't know. That's, that's my opinion.
I mean, over, we got a administrative office.
Right there.
My question, I guess, is because you've got three that's in this building. Any reason you need three?
I mean, sometimes three's not enough.
Actually, four.
I hate to say that, but.
Counsel, y'all go ahead and comment.
It's not expensive. I don't think that's the issue at all because it's not expensive to be in over. It's just that if the library's gonna offer it, that's great because then we can give them that option. The probate office is still offering it, just like they did before. But I do feel like we need to have.
You gotta have an answer on this tonight.
I know you can study on it if you want to.
We've got it till January, so then you've got plenty of time.
Let me tie it a bit because I'm, I mean, I need to clean up what you want us, I need to make sure we got a better understanding of what's going on with this. What you exactly want to do. Because we've got four here in this office, in this, and plus not counting the library, not counting the park.
And I don't know how many you have, Mr. Mike.
We have two. Myself and Sue, the other four time board.
Two?
Well, does the park, does the park, when they do that, when they decide on their coaches, they do a program background? Do they have to notarize any? You don't have to do that, so. I didn't know if that's what you're just mentioning, what you notarize them.
These are the only ones we have, are.
What's the, what's the name?
Uh, SIR.
All right, y'all, I'll table, we'll discuss it. We'll bring it back up next council meeting. All right, next item on the agenda is old business. Has anybody else, has anybody got any old business?
I got, I got some. Go ahead. You think we can take that sign and move it down?
Yes, I apologize. I meant to come down, it's here what you do.
Yeah, we go with it?
Yeah. Can y'all shake them off a little bit early to go do that?
Sure.
Or let it start a little bit early, late?
Yeah.
I go take it down. I try that. I hadn't been up there as much as I have been in the past. But yeah, it needs to come down most definitely.
Keep saying coming soon.
Yeah. And if you could pull it up or something, I'd rather pull it up, pull it up instead of cutting the post off even with the ground, that's kind of been a little bit of a holdup because I think we need to take it down the right way. Where we use the post or something. Yeah, I'll get it down. If I can get it down by the next council meeting, I'll let you ask for it.
Well, I mean, they're just people and I'm, you know, we do that all the time and I don't even want to get into that one with me too.
Yeah, I know. So yeah, we'll get it down. Promise.
I have three this week. Coming soon.
I have some old business about signs.
Which signs?
One on foothill road, the old tree fell, or foothill and, you know, Freedom Street and Fairview. There's a big old tree there on the corner fell, knocked that down.
That stop sign?
The stop sign's fine, it's just the street. But yeah, it tells the road and needs one on the other end.
I'll get the road.
And one more at intersection of.
I'll tap it down for it, forget it.
Metal Art and Canal Road Four.
You got it.
Know that near? It's there, but it's just standing against the fire pole. It's these people that have been there. That's it.
Woodville? Woodville 118? Yeah, sign there too, right down there. Woodville and 118, that's it.
There's not one there at all, or you want the sign put there? We got, we got orders for decorative signs. We already got, we got extra decorative signs. That's what was that? Then we got decorative signs on the streets, all, 118 all the way to Dollar General, don't we? Yes.
We didn't have one there originally.
Right. So.
And we had, and Main Street purchased those and we had not planned to put another decorative sign. We're not ordering any more decorative signs. Or had not planned to.
That was a Main Street, the decorative sign was a Main Street issue.
We left down some, there's several that are not.
Any reason, is 911, is that street, that street's called Woodville?
It's a Woodville street.
What's the paramedic do? If you got a new paramedic and they go down 118, they gonna find Woodville? Are they looking for signs that goes GPS, how they know Woodville is?
All the guys, now because you got someone that's coming out of Fed, eating Tuskegee lotion, they've all got GPS in the trucks. The one that says turn right there.
I guess it is.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's, I mean.
I would say it's a law where everybody has to put it down a little more.
I do too.
Amen.
And we actually got with the fire department a while back and went around and kinda talking to folks. Asking we'd put up, get one, we'd put it up for them.
They made out.
Oh, I got to get out there decently, put it back.
You didn't give me a second. That you're ready to.
Yes.
Now, number one. I tell you, I don't know, I think what they may be waiting on is to let roads in there. I'll bring you up to date. Engineers, they've changed engineers on this project up here. I talked with him one night this week. I run into him, and he just talked with him. Caleb Dean, that turned engineer, Caleb. That he's with, Caleb, and he's took over this project. Caleb, and he's took over this project, and we're waiting on another approval from the state, which should have been done six months ago, but I don't, but he's on it, because I made sure that, uh...
So they have to name it?
Well, they, I don't know if they'll name it, nine one one, I think, I think that maybe what's, what they're waiting on is for that street to be finished. Have you had any comments or anything to say about that road going into Tiffin Service Center that they're not being named? Because they're still using a one twenty-nine address with that facility. But I'll check on that too, see if they can know, know, well, and I'll find out if we can name it.
You, may I question, may I even question about you, Mike? I haven't had any questions.
I'm not as concerned about, which Tiffin has not, has not said anything about it not being the correct address that they've got, because they actually, I mean, we've got several places like that, you know as well, that, down here on one seventy-one, Kyle Road, those addresses, those, those people who, Kyle Road, still have a one seventy-one address. I see where that could be confusing, because, you know, like, if I'm in a city, I'm not used to, and I'm hunting for that road, and it's not named, I'm not ever gonna find it.
That's right.
My GPS is not working, you know, if it don't, if it's not on the system, I won't find it, I'm looking for that sign.
Well, they named it, I don't know. That's what they call it.
Well, no, road, you know, that's just like another road down there. I mean, at what point do you consider something a city street or, or road? I mean, what's it take for one to be considered that? It's just, this road just right there, past Hilltop to the right, it's got as many residents living on it as the one on the left down the road there, it's called Happy Hill. There's not that road that turns right between Prescott House and that other house on the hill, that road, that road is not recognized by nine one one, as even being there. You know, so those people that's out there, they think, they do a nine one one call, it's gonna be chaotic trying to find it.
There's three up there.
Sorry.
There's three houses up there.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
And the only way I know it was just by name.
It's just a driveway.
They called and gave me a name, and I don't know where to go.
It's still back in the day, well, there's a few things around in every city public that's still back in the day, and that's one thing that's still back in the day. But I, I'll, and I've worked on that last term or something about trying to get that road named, or trying to get something done with that road. It is in Fayette County, uh, you know, that's, that's a little bit different way that things are done down there than they are up here, but still, it needs to be, I don't, I mean, it's just like, if a road were used, you know, for, I mean, it's kind of hard to explain, hard to understand, and it's just like up here with Todd Bill at Gregville, I mean, that, is their driveway named? You know, and that, their driveway is as long as, probably as long as that road, that driveway, that, wherever that is going to those three houses. You know, it's kind of, you gotta try to figure out what is, what makes it a road, when somebody picks it up, or if it's a city or county picks it up as a road, it walks, the city or the county, neither one's ever maintained that road, though.
Not that I'm aware of, because it's still a good road.
Yeah, and the same way with Kyle, we've had that discussion here before about paving it, if the city don't, we'd have to get the landowners to agree, and that may be the same issue as down here on this road.
I wonder who owns the property, that it's on it?
Well, old James Pike is up against it, in there.
But Billy, who owns all that property?
Over here.
I mean, like, Billy, who owns all the property right down here?
Yeah.
It's probably divided, doesn't?
Yeah, I know it's different, Bill, Bill Barnett's on it, part on one side, James Pike's on the other side, and you got, I don't know who owns back in there. I believe it is in the Chang's name, I think, but anyway, I'll work on these street signs and see if I can get that one. And I'll, if anybody else got any other over there? If not, I need to, we're on our waiting abatement board, we, which I think I announced it, announced it last council meeting, didn't I? That Johnny Estes turned in his resignation, didn't want to serve on that board, because due to his health. Tom Burleson, I asked the council if it's okay to appoint Tom Burleson to that abatement board, um, he's agreed to serve on it, and, you know, I'd like to ask for a motion in a second to appoint him to that board. All in favor? Okay, and then the other position that we still needed to fill, Randy Webster, lives down here, right outside of town on the left here, about where you turn to go up to, uh, Cuntano Heights, he's agreed to serve in that other position. That would put us at the full amount of members that we'd want to put on that board. I need to ask council, make a motion in a second to approve him to that position. All in favor? Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, it's got a truck that I think we briefly talked about last council meeting, um, it's got a truck, we've done agreed to surplus that truck, is this is a mower.
Mower.
Uh, do you know which mower? This is a lawnmower.
It's a grasshopper, zero turn, about sixteen hundred hours on it, and it's one that's had parked this year and have not had any use.
Is council okay with putting that up for surplus, not been used this year? Is anything, is it just getting more out?
Rob said starter, I need replaced, E-battery, couple of tires, at least aired up, if not replaced, because they don't need, I don't, I don't know that they've had it serviced at all this year.
I got a motion to surplus, and I need a second. All in favor?
Mayor, you want to do that locally, just through the, can you send through Doug Diggles or just do local?
Yeah, post it in, post it here and then run it on the paper. Till we go over to next council meeting, will it be a tone? Okay, we'll do it, take it out and post it. That'll be fine, there are ten or two ways. Uh, the next, the next, I've got another thing on the, uh, old business, under old business back, it's been about three, I know it's been three, possibly three and a half years ago, which time flies, don't seem like it's been that long, but I think it'd been about the time that y'all had come into this administration, come in, uh, as council member, Frank Hollingworth had come in with a windmill rubber, wanting to, uh, go through the city with a loan for purchase of equipment that he needed to take on another line of processing those beads, what we call those beads, through him, I think, somehow, anyway, they want the machine to do that with. And, and, and at that time, when he come in, uh, he was, to get it to go through, to get the loan to go through the city, he was put up a life insurance policy and a CD, and it's been, it's been paid down, he's paid on it every month for the last three years, and he's, he's been paying it down. He's asked me to ask the council if they would release the CD part of that, because if something happened to him, he didn't want his wife to have a hiccup, because that, that money's been untouchable, because it's been tied to that loan. Still leave the other part on it, that we've got, we asking for two different things against it, the life insurance policy plus that CD, and he's asking if the council would consider releasing that CD.
Is the bank fine with that?
The bank, the bank's fine with it, the bank's all, the bank's okay with it, I mean, he's, he's been up to date on his payments, he's not missing the payments the last three years, what, he's like, what, that's two hundred and, twenty-two hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty something thousand.
You said he...
Service, obviously, like, pay, there's, that's how much it locks on, initially started out, I think, three feet.
So the life insurance coverage still in?
Best of my knowledge, it would, I mean, I'm not gonna be a hundred and ten percent of it. I think that when we were doing that, that one part of it, either part of it would have done, and the council wanted him to put both parts up, and he, he was, you know, he was upset that they, that we wanted him to put that life insurance policy against it too, that he went, that's what the council said, that's how, y'all agreed to do it, and that's what he did. It's been three, going on three and a half years, and he's asked if we can release that, because that money's just been sitting there, and he couldn't do nothing with it, if he needed to. And I mean, I think it says a lot that he's, that he's able to have a two hundred and five thousand on the CD that's been tied up for three years, that he hadn't touched, and he's still made his payments, and I mean, I, I, it's my recommendation that the council release that part of it. He's done this before, before my, before my term, I think he might, this started back in Bill West's term, uh, where he's been in business, when they purchased the cotton mill, he's, he's purchased, you know, that building from the city through a grant, through the loan, through the city, and has paid that loan back, and then he's borrowed money for an industrial grant, so to speak, and, and it ventured, and has paid that, this is probably the second, I know the second's not the third time, he's did that with the city over, I know it's been probably close to twenty years now, I guess, twenty years that he's been doing it, he's, he's still employing close to forty-three, forty-four. I'd like to see the council maybe consider releasing that CD part of it anyway. That's one, I have to get the council to do it, I have to ask for a motion to do that. In a second.
The bank's okay with it?
All in favor? You sustained it, he's in there. Uh, if there's anything else, that's, let's go somewhere, Mr. that's my, I've forgotten. Brett Burleson, uh, I mean, he stepped out. Is he, is he still an officer down? Is he back to the number he's supposed to be?
I believe he's back.
Thirteen. There was still one short in that department.
I thought he was still...
I thought it was still one short. I'd like to know, I'd like to leave, I'd like to get up to speed on that. Are you, are you back to the right number of officers, or are you still one short?
I'm right.
You post down?
Yeah, I've got one in the camera, I'm right, once he gets out.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let me bring y'all up to this, this, this was something I had to make a kind of sudden decision on, council ordered, but you won't be surprised with that, it may already be in the council table that they printed for y'all, but we had a turbo go out and then a fire truck. I had Alan, which Alan, I mean, he has, I don't know if you hear, I mean, Alan has an issue with a truck, he, he kind of prioritizes, he don't like an issue with any of the equipment. But the bill, when I got to Esmond on the bill, it throws me into a day of thinking. Before I could get back with him, he wouldn't even know what I was gonna do, and the bill was nearly ten thousand dollars. So, you know, being a business in myself, and it's like, if, 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 any business, if I buy a part, even the Internal Revenue Service figures that you're gonna work that part of, and they go to figure the taxes, they got a form of it, you use it to, as long as it was short, and I told Alan, I said, you need to see what you can get the parts for, and the city paid for, and that's what I done, and so it was, it was kind of, you know, we got the parts, the parts, he had, I had him check on getting the parts, and the parts was a little over seven thousand dollars, just for the parts for that truck. But I went ahead and made the decision to get it over to the, to get it up, seventy-eight hundred dollars worth of parts. That's what that's for, is for turbo on that truck, I think the turbo was seven, right at six thousand on it, and had to have an EGR cooler, and a few other things that needed fixing, small things, boy, his internet, I told him, we'll fix it. So when you see that bill, that's what that's for, you know, but we, it was a, the call came the next day after we patched the budget, you know, and then the decon, we've got this issue, and I, man, I wish I'd known that, we had council meeting, but anyway, it worked out, you know, I think that we handled it the best way, but I just want y'all to know what that bill was for, nearly eight thousand dollars. Um, I don't, I don't think I've got anything else. If, if, if nobody else has got anything else, I need to ask for a, uh, approval to pay the bill, I need to ask for a motion.
On Tara's pay, Mike, I bet, she actually lived at the eight thirty-five, because she turned in her notice before those pay scales went into effect.
Okay, so she'll be, she'll be pretty much starting out where we got her from.
She actually had started in a much lower rate, she started at seven thirty-five and had worked herself up to the eight thirty-five, but, um, so, I just wanted to let you know that he did find out.
Okay.
So that is what she lived at, and as a rehired, do you still want her to go through the physical and the first drug test?
Me personally, I, I feel like on the, on the rehire, hire, whatever, when they've been out of the system, I think they need to go ahead and be tested, and then they'll get back in the system on rotation if, if their name gets got on random.
I figured, that's, me and Angel figured so, I wouldn't have thought so, but I support it.
I just think it's the best practice.
I get it.
Oh, I, did I get a motion, did I get a motion from anybody to pay the bill?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Chris second. All in favor? Uh, let me make sure we got this before adjourned, the next council meeting's on Tuesday or Thursday.
Or Thursday, or Tuesday.
We're back to the moment, can you back?
Stay with me.
The bill, the, uh...
November.
November.
Have y'all set the date for the Christmas parade yet?
It's always the first Monday in December.
First Monday in December, so we got the time, five, five, three, six.
Yeah, I have it. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
She said C, C.
Six, Brett says six, uh, look, I'd like for y'all to work on it, you know, I need y'all to be kind of giving me some ideas, throw your thoughts at me, or whatever, because I'm, I'm gonna be in the, uh, thinking and discussion about this sewer building, what we need to do with this sewer building, uh, if y'all, if you got any suggestions or ideas or whatever, shoot them or whatever, and then I'll come to you with what I, come up with what I think I'm working on. Uh, is that what you, you had talked about earlier, Mike, is that something that can be discussed, or don't need to be discussed, but is still in the planning stage?
As far as the closing of it, that's public knowledge, so...
Uh, the center of concern, Mike informed me today, that the center of concern would be no longer in business as of what date?
Officially, the end of October.
The tenth, fifteen, about fifteen more days that they're gonna close the center of concern. And that's why I'm gonna go ahead and mention that, is because I need to kind of get an idea from the council, uh, what we want to do with that building as well, you know, what we need to do with those two, what I call high sore buildings, I mean, kind of sort of what we want to do there, Mary and her team is taking care of that. One buyer has purchased the old post office, and y'all may have seen it, somebody's already been cleaning up around that and cutting weeds and stuff out of it, we'll probably just see something go, either that building go down or something go back up in that building, which, it, it, the building's empty, if it's clean and painted, which is a lot better than sitting there, growed up. And I had mentioned to Sandy earlier, which I know I don't, asking about to adjourn, but I've been, I've mentioned to Sandy earlier, since we've got the abatement board in position, I'm gonna try to set up a meeting with the abatement board, we're gonna go with this weed litter ordinance, I think Todd gave y'all a version of draft of what, if anybody's looked over that and sees anything that needs to be added to or taken away from, or need let me know, or we need to discuss it as a body or whatever, where Todd can, when we start this abatement board, we give them a copy of this ordinance and let them know just what we're gonna do. There's a grant out there, that's, that's out there every year for demolition of, of buildings, unsightly buildings inside the city, and I've roughly counted about twelve to fourteen that, I've already mentioned to Sandy that I think we need to be maybe proceeding that grant, that takes a little while to do that, because you gotta get the okay from landowners to take it down, and different things has to be signed off on, has to be inspected, all this kind of stuff. Um, I need to, y'all be kind of thinking about that. Um, I need to, y'all be kind of thinking about that, if it's something that you think we do want to proceed and go through with, where we can go ahead and get that process started with is a vacant board. Kind of, you know, which we all know what houses that we're up against now that's already to the point of litigation that we, uh, that we're facing, to, we kind of, Todd put the brakes on us from going full speed with it, but we're to the point where this, when this ordinance gets in place, wherever we will be, we need to do something. So y'all, we'll kind of look over those couple of things for me when we come back, because I'm going to try to, you know, utilize this board, that's what I'm, I'd like to utilize them, you know. I've got, I think we've got some good members that's willing to serve and do what they need to do to make. I guess that's all I got, so I want to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I was.
Second.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.